invocation will be given by Pastor Donnie Filippo, pastor of Gospel Center Church. If everyone would please silence your cellphone and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today, we humbly bow ourselves before you, acknowledging that all authority comes from you. So today, Father, we pray for wisdom. You said if any lack wisdom, that all we have to do is ask. So I pray for each and every leader here as they make decisions concerning the citizens in this city. I pray, God, that you give them the wisdom that they need. I ask for your blessings. I ask for your guidance. I ask for you to impart to them the knowledge that they need to handle the business of today. Father, we're thankful for your mercy and your grace, and we give you the glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and limited to justice.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West, Mayor Pro Tim Neal, Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Gitts, absent. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
All right, today we have three proclamations, one recognition, and two presentations. First, we're going to have a proclamation recognizing the month of April as the National Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Accepting will be Ms. Ashley Hassan, Crisis Center of Southeast Texas Educational Specialist. And you can bring anybody with you, so that's with you.
Thank you for what you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hey, one, two, three. Hi there. I just want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to you guys for declaring April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I just want to say the precipice for the change we want to see starts with believing survivors and being there for each other. I think that's, that's the key here is to listen, to believe, and to be there. That's it. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Now we have a proclamation recognizing the month of April as Fair Housing Month, and accepting will be Whitney Walters, City of Beaumont Housing Program Specialist.
Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you. And now we have a proclamation recognizing the month of May as Older Americans Month. Accepting will be Ms. Jancy Kimble, and I'm an older American, so, and Stacy Olson and Adley Thompson, and thank y'all.
You're a seasoned citizen.
Yeah.
Seasoned citizen. Seventy-five, eighty.
That's what I'm saying.
Hey, thank you for this month.
Thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No way. It's more impressive.
Everybody who's old, smile.
I'm not going to smile.
I don't even have to say one, two, three. Y'all are all smiling.
I just want to take a few minutes to tell you how important it is that we remember our senior citizens of Beaumont and the surrounding communities. You know, by giving them a voice and ensuring that they have one, that is the way that we build a stronger community, and that is the way we build a stronger Beaumont. Across the nation, senior citizens are among the most forgotten demographic out there, and that is so sad to me. And then we've got food insecurity among homebound seniors at a crisis level. But thanks to you and the support that you give us, you allow us to continue to be out there, and your belief in our mission means more than you know. We thank you so much. But I want everybody to know that just because we have proclaimed May as Older Americans Month, the needs of our seniors do not stop on May 31st. They continue, and I want you to know that we will be out there fighting for them with your support and delivering the difference every single day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have recognition for Ethan Wang. Wang, a Westbrook High School student who's been recognized as the first place winner in the UIL Number Sense Event and the first place in District UIL Meet and at the TMSCA State Meet in San Antone. Very impressive. Accepting will be Ethan and his parents and his teachers if they would come up now. Thank you.
Fifth grader.
I'm working for the city of Beaumont.
Yeah, super impressive. Yeah, here you go.
Congratulations, son.
Very good.
Congratulations to your family.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations to your family.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Congratulations to your family.
Okay, one, two, three. Got it.
Next, we have a communication update from the City of Beaumont Communication Department. Ms. Tracy Kinnick's coming up.
Happy Tax Day, everyone. I can promise you these announcements will be faster than your tax refund. It's almost Election Day, and early voting for mayor and city council positions runs April 22nd through the 29th. The general election is Saturday, May 3rd, so make sure you exercise your right to vote. Time to make your voices heard when it comes to the bond proposal, so let the city know what you think is the most important thing Beaumont can do in the next few years by taking the Bond Community Survey at beaumontbonds.com. Representative Brian Bablin will be the keynote speaker for the 2025 Congressional Art Competition Awards Reception Regarding Historical Landmarks of Texas. The event will be held at the Terrell Historical Library Thursday, April 24th at 6:00 PM. Whether you're considering downsizing, looking for an affordable housing solution, or just fascinated by the tiny homes movement, we'd love to have you join us for an educational event tomorrow, April 16th, at 10:00 AM at the Lakeside Center on Magnolia to learn all about what a tiny house is. Exciting news, the Beaumont Museum, or the Fire Museum of Texas, has been nominated for the Best Roadside Attraction by USA Today for the second year in a row. Last year, we proudly secured fifth place in the nation, and this year, we're aiming for the top spot to bring the big win to Beaumont. Our nomination last year brought incredible attention, increasing our national visitors by 27.5% and doubling our hotel stays. So voting is now open. It ends on May 5th, and you can vote once per day. The winners will be announced May 14th. Search USA Today's Best Roadside Attractions or go to the city's Facebook page to vote. April 22nd is Earth Day, a day celebrated annually as a global movement to raise awareness about environmental issues and encourage people to take action to protect our planet. And with that in mind, the city's Code Enforcement Division is teaming up with BISD to go into our elementary classrooms and talk to the students about the importance of picking up litter and how it can negatively affect our planet. It's just another way that the city is partnering with BISD to bring positive change to our community. Finally, a reminder, city offices will be closed this Friday, April 18th, in observance of Good Friday, and we hope everyone has a wonderful Easter holiday.
Thank you. And lastly, we have, well, not for the whole meeting, but just for presentations, we have a strategic plan update, which will be presented by Mr. Miles Haynes, Assistant to the City Manager and Special Projects.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council and general public. I'll be doing the update on the strategic plan. You can go to the next slide. So the purpose of the strategic plan is, you guys start this, I think about a year and a half ago, but I kind of wanted to highlight this slide because strategy is more about the how, purposes is about the why, passion is about, you know, how we express ourselves, how I speak sometimes, and the different things that you see throughout the city, and the goals are the what. So some of this is going to be about the what, but mainly it's going to be about the how. How are we going to go about, you know, these plans, and I'm going to provide some updates, and so you'll see that throughout the presentation. And values are the principles that we have while we accomplish these goals and go about this strategy. So the 22nd, 2023, so that's about a year, seven months, and about 24 days, to be exact. As of now, 69% of the entire strategic plan that we're looking at, we're looking at the five-year aspect of it. So you had a 2028 line, and then you have a 2038 line. So these are, this is a plan that you approved, you worked with a consultant, you spent a lot of hours, so we want to thank you guys for putting in that time and, and hope that, you know, through this partnership with the administration and the mayor and council that we can continue to accomplish these goals. One of the things I do want to highlight is the mission of the City of Beaumont. It's not stated a lot, and honestly, the strategic plan is not communicated a lot. Just from the general public, that's one of the things that we want to kind of improve on in the future, but I'll state this for people who are watching, this, this is our mission. And typically, I think we were in a session, the city manager was doing a session with staff, and, you know, he challenged them to recite the mission. And sometimes we, we comb over these things in our busy schedules, but I do want to recite that for anybody who's watching online, maybe re-watching it, but the, the mission of the City of Beaumont is, Beaumont City Government Mission is to provide exceptional municipal services and to plan for Beaumont's future in a financially responsible manner, open, transparent, and ethical manner through a high-performing team, city team, that provides outstanding customer service and involves our Beaumont community. So that's a mission that you guys worked with the consultant, you know, staff worked with it as well, so just kind of want to put that back on our forefront. For 2028, which is the five-year aspect of the strategic plan, you identify five goals. One of them was a great place to live, financially sound city, providing excellent services to the community, vibrant downtown, riverfront, livable neighborhoods, upgraded city facilities and infrastructure through investments. So these are things that you decided that were, that were important, you worked with the executive team and staff, and so we're hoping that we're making progress on those things. So, next slide. So I'm going to go through each goal, like I just listed those five goals, and under each goal, you'll see, I think you have a handout, in your strategic plan overview, you'll have this document, and you can go one by one on it. And for the people who are watching, you can access the strategic plan on beaumonttexas.gov. You can click Departments, scroll down to City Manager's Office, and in that right corner, there's a section that says Related Documents, and there's a tab you can click. So at any point you want to review this in the future, you can always review the strategic plan. So let's get into it, because this could be a long presentation, but I know you guys are going to help me get through this pretty fast, so thank you in advance. Stay at Action One, sorry. So Action One is, it's assigned to Chris Fuboon and Ms. Christina Loke. It's, when we onboarded Christina Loke, she is heading up the Economic Development Office. They're going about it in the way of increasing our incentives to the general private sector. They worked on a 312 tax abatement policy, joining organizations like the International Council of Shopping Centers, International Economic Development Council, building stronger relationships and improving our marketability through data-driven measures. And so I'm going to abbreviate on the how we're going about this particular goal, but we would deem this goal complete based on, you, you have these forms, so you can kind of review it. These are objectives, so if I say it's complete, it's based on these things that you see in front of you. Next slide. So this one is the Water Park Feasibility Study. It is not completed at this point. This will probably come to you guys in future considerations if you deem it something that is important of you, or if you want to, that goes either through the CIP, slated to be in the CIP in 2028 for design and 2029 for construction. And those are estimates at this point, but that's one of the objectives that you guys identified, and a great place to live. Next. The Real-Time Crime Center is complete. Police Chief Tim, he is heading that up, and so they've done a great job. They've onboarded four analysts that were budgeted for in this previous fiscal year, and they're actually building regional partnerships. They're attending a lot of neighborhood meetings to try to get residents and businesses to get more cameras signed up so we can have a safer community. Obviously, they're using technology to look at ways to prevent crime and, and reduce their time to respond. So, next one. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask a question as I'm in particular slide. Goal one, Action Four, Citywide Beautification. This is assigned to our Parks and Green Space Director, Mr. Kenneth Hargad. This is complete. This is through planting of trees, ongoing removal of dead trees in certain areas, maintaining vibrant welcome spaces year-round. You'll see the crews all around the city. They're really doing a great job, so. And, and you'll see in this particular slide, it says the next step, primary decision-making. I wanted to list that so you can kind of understand, you know, any, some of this is in the beginning stages, so you, you're probably looking at a Phase One of it. You know, beautification is never done in a city like Beaumont, but based on our objectives and goals, this is what we have completed, and the next phase of it, or the next decision-making and process, will be staff. Next slide. Our Indoor Sports Space Study, we have gotten proposal from consultants. That'll be considered in the budget. It, it was not, it doesn't have funding at this point, so that could be a future item that comes before you, but you guys would probably make a decision on something like that in the near future. Next one. This is the litter cleanup short-term action plan. As you know, we did a lot of clean blitzes, and we've done, we've increased our partnership with BISD, doing cleanups within the community. Staff has showed up and, and participated as well. So this is complete, but obviously, it is still ongoing. Next slide. Community Mental Health, we meet with a group of partners, whether that be Baptist Hospital, the county, Regenia Rogers, Mental Health America, Lamar University, Beaumont Independent School District, and this group identified five priorities that the city could assist them with, and as we played the role of a community organizer in a sense to work with this coalition, coalition of mental health practitioners, and they listed things like website support, marketing, the services that they have, fostering a network of support, supporting them at different events, and looking at different legislation that we can support them in moving forward. And also grants, nonprofits are in a dire need for grant support, and so we try to work with them on, on those kind of things. I'm also, became a practitioner of trust-based relational intervention. This is a, it's a practice that is well-known within the mental health space. I was actually able to speak to over 40 practitioners yesterday at a regional training. So we try to get out in different ways. I mean, these people are from CASA and different organizations within the community, so I was fortunate enough to speak for about an hour and a half on the different practices and working with them on strategies. And we also partnered with the Beaumont Lobby. I think Councilmember Samuel, you were able to attend one of those sessions, that those are training sessions that are for different practitioners that work within the community, and so we're doing our best to find the groove and support the agencies out there. So that's been our role, is to support the people who are doing the work. Next slide. The Events Review, they're still doing internal audits. Emily and her staff are, you know, created a one-stop shop for individuals who are looking to reserve for events and things like that, and the next stage of their particular strategic plan objective is the Special Events Ordinance that's been drafted, and then staff will make a decision on that as far as the next phase of that process. Next. Dog Park, short and sweet, they let the dogs out. It is complete. Obviously, you know where it's located. Rogers Park. Oh, I made y'all laugh. Good. It wasn't that boring. I will move to the next slide. All right, this is Fire and EMS Action Plan. Obviously, Chief White has updated you guys a lot on what's going on with the Fire and EMS. The Good Sam app and the partnership with the Right Site Telehealth System is what he most recently updated you on. I know they are moving towards the advanced life support. That's been a big focus of them. Obviously, continuing to hire incentive to, to get more staff, but they're doing a great job. Based on the objectives that listed that you guys have in your plan, that I would, I would say is complete. Some of the things you're going to see, they're saying ongoing, there are probably one or two things that are not complete, but, but they're in the last stages, so. Next slide. Citywide Staff Review, this is assigned to HR Director, Ms. Carmen Williams, and they're supporting departments year-round, running data, supporting them to see if they can look at maybe repurposing positions versus creating new roles, offering year-round guidance for both planned and unplanned staffing needs. So they're being a great resource internally. She's brought a wealth of knowledge to our team, and so that's been pretty good. Next slide. Oh, let me highlight, and Goal One, as I list, as I went through them, six out of the nine things we completed, so that would put us at about 66% completion. So that's pretty good, I would think, so. When I look at the overall, when we look at this from an overall perspective, we're, we're probably going to head towards a refresher in the future because we are a little bit advanced on the phases of these particular things that y'all outlined in the strategic plan. This one is the City Rebranding. Our Communications Director, Tracy, has been working on this. They've updated the city website, I mean, consistently responding to Facebook. They've done a great job. I think local government is in a different era than it ever has been, so communication is totally different, and I think they've made great adjustments in branding the city of Beaumont, so we're, I would say, complete. I put ongoing up there. There are some things that we still have slated for FY '26 and '27. Next slide. All right, this is City Organization of Cultural Alignment. Mr. Williams is, you know, a great leader, and I don't say that because he allowed me to work for him, but I've worked for a lot of great leaders, and he's one of those people. Some of the things that I think that is huge for the organizational alignment is seeing your goals. When you work for a big city, I mean, a mid-sized city or whatever organization, seeing the bigger goals, being around the bigger picture is huge for staff. It helps boost the morale, keeps everybody focused, and so those are, as you know, those in the city manager's conference room, you see them on that board. Since we started this in 2023, they've been on that board. I mean, I like technology, but he liked to write on the board, so that works for him, and, and it, and it keeps it, it keeps it at the forefront. We also, the staff went through a Lean Six Sigma white belt training here recently at Lamar University. We'll probably do a refresher on those things, but it's just a way to look at government efficiency. So staff sat through a whole, how many hours was that, like a couple hours that y'all sat through? Yeah, it was a couple hours that they dedicated in the morning to learn about Lean Six Sigma and government efficiency and how to eliminate waste. And so if you ever study and look up Lean Six Sigma, there are many levels to it. The white belt is the beginning stage of Lean Six Sigma. So good organizations are familiar with those principles, and that's something that I've looked at. Also, the AI Committee, that's headed up by our Director of IT, Ms. Angie Wright. She's done a great job to kind of steer that committee. I'm also on that committee with Christine Loke, Mr. Bo Hanson, Demi Ingham, Mr. Kenny Smith, Ms. Tracy Kinnick, and so we're all collectively looking at AI and basically ways that we can become more efficient. And so we are surveying staff, whether they went through a training, or we've, you know, kind of met them in person to find out, what, what are your pain points as an employee, and like, how do we streamline? And so when we find those pain points and identify some ways to streamline, we use technology to make it more efficient, and people can call that AI, I would assume. Also, the biggest focus since Mr. Williams started is customer service training. That's been the biggest thing. Good customer, great customer service, worldwide, worldwide customer service. He was at a city manager's annual meeting with staff, and somebody asked him, they said, "What is your biggest focus?" And his response was to make sure that Beaumont is a organization that's recognized state and worldwide. And so when you have big goals like that, it takes time, and, you know, we appreciate the leadership to kind of put that out there. So it, it helps us as an organization to try to move forward on things like this. Enough from Mr. Williams, let me go to the next slide. All right. So the next one is City Communications Enhancement. It's kind of similar to the one that you saw before, but this is more the technical things that they're doing. The Beaumont Beat Video Podcast, they've been doing a great job doing one-on-one with departments to really get that message out. Sometimes city residents don't really understand what goes into many of the departments, so they've kind of brought a light to what goes on behind closed doors and different things like that. They're looking at the primary funding for PIG, and that, that'll be in FY '25 in partnership with the IT Department, so they're doing that. They completed the media training, and media training was huge, having that partnership with the media, and, and Tracy could directly connect to these partners and, and minimize any things that, that may arise at best. So this is slated as ongoing, be close to complete in my, in my mind. Next one. All right, Financial Policies, Fund Balance Policies Review and Refinement. I think just recently, at the March 25th, City Council, I mean, you guys voted to clarify your fund balance definition. So that's kind of in, in alignment with the strategic plan and kind of looking at this. Obviously, you'll go through each budget season and identify, and really, at any point, you identify what policies you think are best, and, and so you did that on March 25th, and, and this is complete. This is assigned to Assistant City Manager, June Ellis. Next one. All right, the Water Fund Balance Policy Review. There's no changes at this particular point. There was an internal process looking at it to make sure if, if there needs to be any change, but at this point, it's just maintaining that minimum fund balance of 15% of the annual operating expenditures. And why this matters, it basically just ensures financial stability in the water fund, maintains the readiness for infrastructure repairs or emergencies, avoids things that can interrupt public services. So we'll move to the next one. All right, the Strategic Plan Implementation, that's kind of part of what I'm doing today, part of what a lot of staff is doing throughout the week. I do want to acknowledge staff that, that are assigned to these particular projects. You have Mike Harris, Ms. Carmen Williams, our city attorney, Ms. Emily Willer, Mr. Kenneth Hargad, our police chief, fire chief, Ms. Freddie Willard, Public Works Director, Ms. Molly, our Assistant City Manager, Chris Boone, Assistant City Manager, June Ellis, and our Director of Planning and Community Development is Demi. So they're a part of the implementation of the strategic plan. I just get to work with them and try to make sure that we're kind of tracking along that pathway, so they want to acknowledge them. But six, like I said earlier, 69% of these goals are, are getting to a point where they're pretty much complete, and then, based on what I look, we're making about progress on about 72 things. There are some things that we haven't made progress on, but these are much bigger ticket items, and obviously, you'll see it throughout this presentation. You can continue. Customer Service Training, like I highlighted earlier, is important. The Hemorrhista Department is heading it up, Ms. Carmen Williams and Ms. Jackie Gunner. They do a great job on these customer service trainings, especially when you onboard it as a new staff member, you have to go through these, so they, they are mandatory, but this objective is complete. All right, the Bond Improvement Strategy is implemented to correct, correct the discounts on water and sewer services for some commercial customers. As you know, for previous meetings, we've completed you know, for previous meetings, uh, we've completed the adjustment water sewer rates for outer city agencies receiving inside city rates. Uh, we've increased from seventy five percent to a hundred percent as per, as per the city ordinance, updated the minimum fee for water and sewer services. Uh, that's my, I'm sorry. Um, we've shifted from merchant fees to customers to align with industry standards. Um, and based on the objectives that you have in front of you, this would be deemed as complete as well. Uh, the employee compensation and classification study review, we'll be entering phase three of that process this upcoming, um, fiscal year. And so we'll be, uh, staff and, um, Hymn Resto Department Finance and the City Manager will identify, uh, what, what would that look like as far as staff and, um, that particular objective. It is ongoing. Next slide. Our legislative agenda, we started this in twenty twenty three. Our second one was in twenty twenty four. Uh, obviously in our first session, we were able to pass that House Bill fifty twelve, which gives us some financial, uh, incentives or I would say ability to pay down debt when it comes to a particular, uh, project. So that's pretty huge. We are tracking legislation. We work with, uh, Hillco Partners at the state level. And we work with, uh, a group at the federal level to monitor the impacts of whether that's cutting of grants or things like that for city services and what that looks like. I think some of the focuses that we're looking at for this upcoming, uh, the conclusion of this session is the sales tax radius bill and the possibility of recreational facility funding. That will probably come through a rider. And we'll go to the next slide. Sorry. All right, this is, uh, the vehicle accident, accident reduction plan. Uh, this is headed up by our city attorney and they have completed all actions listed to the initial reduction plan and have successfully completed these for them. I mean, they, they've completed the entire thing and they're two of the things that I've seen that they've implemented is the driver's license audits, defensive driving and driver video audit. So, um, they're doing a great job to bring down that accident reduction number for the city of Beaumont. Next slide. Man, I should have brought some water. Um, management succession planning, um, the city manager, um, and our HR director that working hard on this. Uh, the succession plan is, you know, if the city manager wasn't here, who would be next? And so you have two assistant city managers. You have new Public Works Director, new Communications Director, uh, new C V B Director, new Facilities Director, a new Planning and Community Development Director, new Parks and Green Space Director, and a new Police Chief. So uh, those are a part of that management succession plan. Next slide. Uh, the downtown hotel, uh, you guys have contracted with Stonehenge and uh, you will make a future decision on, um, or you'll get information on the feasibility of that particular, um, project moving forward in the future. Um, you did create a TERS here recently and your participation from, um, DD six pending their approval. Um, so that includes the civic center conversation, the riverfront park. Um, so this would probably be revisited sometime in the summer or in the latter part of the year. Next slide. Um, this kind of goes in line with that as well. The downtown master plan, um, plan elements are incorporated in, uh, FY twenty five, CIP, the TERS project list and possibly bond projects list. Um, so most of these things will probably be decided on sometime in the summer. Or later in the year. And this would be a city council decision. Next. Food truck park, uh, Mr. Kenny Smith did a presentation to you guys here recently. Uh, they're in the stages of drafting up the RFP uh, with the idea of the Nature's River Rotary Park. And I think you guys made comments to maybe include some flexibility if the private sector identifies another site. Uh, so those will be, uh, things that will be included in the RFP, um, to be completed within the next a hundred and sixty days. Next slide. AT&T is, is going, that five 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 main site, that's complete. Uh, next slide. All right, homeless strategy. Um, the mayor's coalition is looking at this through more of a community organizer standpoint, uh, collaborating with other agencies to identify some best practices. Obviously, you know homelessness is a big topic, uh, but this is an ongoing matter. Next slide. Vacant lot strategy. Uh, this is headed up by Ms. Demi. Um, they're looking at adding some pre-approved residential plans as that can reduce the, um, roadblocks for individuals and the cost that those players cost when it comes to engineering and things like that. So uh, they're in the research phase of that and, and trying to identify ways to help streamline so people could, um, increase investments in the city of Beaumont. Did I get that right? All right. Uh, vague, oh, proactive downtown. Yeah, I was done. Sorry. You're right. Uh, proactive downtown code enforcement. I'm not sure if they're actually on the agenda today, right? Okay, so you'll get an update on that. That's ongoing. That, that is a part of this very thing that you're getting those type of updates. So next slide. Sorry. Older home revitalization program. Uh, this is needing more funding, hopefully to begin the research and thank you. Okay, so, so this would, uh, possibly been FY twenty six. Next slide. Okay, we're going downhill. We're almost to goal five. Uh, this one is ongoing. Uh, there are some aspects of it that are not complete, but it is pretty much complete. Funds have been allocated to legacy CDC. They've acquired a multifamily complex off Broadway uh, for about eight non-congruent shelters with council approval. Um. Next slide. Okay, this is the nuts and bolts of things. The wastewater system improvements. Um, Mike Harris and the team have contracted with Black and Veatch and the meetings have started. Um, this is to, for the wastewater treatment plant master plan, which is scheduled for FY twenty five. Next slide. Sewer lift station projects, uh, some of them have been out for bids already, uh, around for April twenty twenty five. Uh, also a part of this assessment, the twenty third street is starting. Uh, that's only part of it because it's about the whole line is about two thousand feet. So there's a forty eight inch force main that, um, is, is getting started on uh, before the fiscal year twenty six. Next slide. Sewer main replacement. Uh, this is continuous and ongoing. Um, when I was talking to Mike Harris about this, you know, he was telling me, which was interesting, that out of all the money that they've allocated to it, about five point seven million, it, it only enhances the sewer mains by one point four percent. Because infrastructure is such a big thing. Oh, they're doing a lot of work. So that's, that's something to highlight. This is an ongoing thing. Um, that's pretty much it. Next slide. Okay, stormwater master plan. Uh, they're requesting FEMA direct administrative cost funding. I think when they completed this initially, um, the rainwater requirements changed. Is that correct, Molly? Yeah, they increased. So I tried to give my brief for Molly. Uh, I think I'm doing okay so far. Uh, the city contributed about a million dollars and DD six partnered with us on about a hundred and eighty thousand on that. And so that's still ongoing. Something around FY twenty six will probably be the next stage of this. So we're still waiting funding. Thank you. Next slide. Okay, infiltration and inflow study, uh, the investigative work. They're doing smoke testing, cleaning, televising, dye testing. They're surveying flow lines. Um, the S S O I phase three is complete. Um, the manhole rehab is done in-house crews and uh, they should be done or have a contract for the rehab by FY twenty five this summer. And this is ongoing as well. Let me go back and highlight, uh, goal two, we had about fourteen of those fourteen things. Pretty much our deem is complete. So that lists us at about a hundred percent. Goal three, one out of four. So we were in that area about twenty five percent complete. Uh, goal four, two out of five of those were, I would deem as complete. So that's about forty percent. And then we're still in goal five. So we have a couple more before I conclude my presentation. Uh, lighting, uh, free, lighting, the freeway underpass, um, text, I rejected the initial proposal. Uh, just based on the colors because they were similar to traffic, uh, signal lights. Uh, but they're still working, uh, Molly and her team still working with Lamar University and they're probably gonna be using the color white for the underpass, uh, lighting. And this is East Virginia underpass on MLK. All right, CIP, uh, you will get, uh, more information on the CIP probably in the middle. I think y'all said May twenty second, May twenty second. Uh, there'll be internal staff meeting, um, within the next couple of weeks, if I'm not mistaken. And then you'll get a presentation, uh, around May twenty second. So that's ongoing, but. And the civic center upgrade, that's tied to obviously, um, the site of the potential, um, project. You guys have contracted with Stonehenge in November. And so there'll be, you'll find out more about this probably middle of the summer, if not later, part of the year. Um, thanks a lot. Uh, sidewalk master plan, uh, Molly, her team, they're really aggressively looking at grants, um, to fund this particular project. Um, and so there are some continued, there's some no for safe routes to school grants out there, text that citywide school zone uh, grants, but the estimated cost of this is about three hundred and sixty thousand. And so the goal here, it, this is an ongoing thing, but to find funding. Um, and they plan to submit it in the, in the budget. So we'll see how that goes. Next slide. The children's museum plan and funding, one of my favorite places. Uh, so we're, they're working to complete the feasibility study, to evaluate the results of the study. And, uh, you guys will more likely be informed about this. This decision will probably come to you guys as, uh, you'll be the next step, primary decision maker here. Uh, next one. All right, IT and construction, uh, they're actively monitoring for incidents. As you know, IT is busy uh, with a lot of, um, projects in our area, area, but expenses related to the project are eligible for reimbursement. That's Cardinal Section or the East Texas portion. Uh, they're working with design engineers on these particular projects. Uh, next slide. All right, I made it through faster than what I thought. Okay, so, um, these are some of our next steps. I'll list out here and I want to add one more to it, uh, but I, I broke down those goals and goal five, we, it looks like we completed seven out of eleven. So that puts us at about sixty three percent of those goals. So we want to start kind of looking at the strategic plan internally from a goal perspective. So that's why I have host smoke monthly goal review meetings. Uh, and this will just be with the designated staff that are assigned to these particular, particular projects. Uh, we'll connect, collect and analyze feedback through targeted surveys. I've already sent out a survey and gotten feedback from staff on just the strategic plan utilization and what are ways that we could, uh, best use it and communicate to staff. So those are things that will be ongoing of doing that. We're gonna protect, conduct a strategic plan refresher probably in the summertime or if, if not the later part of the year. Um, and obviously we want to continue to expand training and learning opportunities for both the staff and the general public. I think, um, I, I toured Coca-Cola and they did a great job of just how they placed their plan around their facility and how everybody that's within the operation understands the bigger plan. And so we want to make sure that we're continually do that. And that this document, it just doesn't collect dust. You know, this is the leader's guide. It's what you have access to. Uh, the public has access, access to it online, but we want to make sure that they're a part of this process as well because it's our plan, uh, together. And then at some point, we want to launch like some type of public facing dashboard where people can track where we are on these particular projects. It, it holds us accountable, everybody accountable and, um, a quicker way for uh, feedback and understanding. Also, uh, in this upcoming budgeting, uh, year, uh, the budget team will be tracking the strategic plan objective. So if any uh, departments are assigned to these goals and things like that, they'll put it in their budget request. So in future presentations, we'll be able to kind of get a better sense of where we are from a budgeting standpoint and how much of these particular goals are allocated, um, as from a budgetary standpoint. Cause there, there's much more in the strategic plan than what I presented. I gave you the overview, the main things, but you know, you have this document, it's your document, you voted on it. Uh, you can go through and see every department's objectives and, and a public candidates as well. So, um, thank y'all for the time. Do you have any questions or feedback?
Thank you, Mr. Haynes.
Okay, thank you.
Job. And can we get an email copy of that presentation? And for those that are here for proclamations, recognitions, or presentations, and you would like to leave, now's the time to do so. And we appreciate you coming today. At the close of the meeting today, city council will recess into executive session to consider matters related to contemplated, contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section five five one dot oh seven one of the government code, the claim of Aaron Reynolds, Jr. Now we're gonna move into public comments. And, uh, now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, regular agenda items, one through nine, or any other topic. Uh, citizens wishing to speak on item ten will be given opportunity to speak during the public hearing. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium. The red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that myself and council cannot respond whenever you're up here making comments, but someone from our office will be in touch.
Arthur Doregon.
Hello, my name is Arthur Dorn, fifty five ninety five Gale Drive in Beaumont, Texas. Um, I have a question. With the recent business closings, not just here, but what seems like everywhere, we know that it, it has a potential to erode city tax bases. I'm aware that Beaumont wants to attract businesses. However, as online sales increase for shoppers, my question is, when that happens, who benefits from the tax revenues from online businesses? Sales versus brick and mortar establishments? That's it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Dean Tucker.
Uh, Mayor and City Council. Oh, twenty, Dean Tucker, twenty five fifty Long Avenue, Beaumont. Uh, I see that we have an extraordinary opportunity here right now at this time in Beaumont to really he- help bring attention to this city and help it expand greatly. My wife and I were introduced to a remarkable Christian church in Austin, Texas in nineteen ninety nine. It used what has been called a hallucinogenic healing herbal tea as a sacrament during its services. It was a brand new experience for both my wife and myself. We were invited to visit the mother church in the heart of the Amazon forest to celebrate the new millennium. It was a difficult journey to get there and the last leg of the trip was an eight hour canoe ride. Ride to visit the small community of three hundred people. I was surprised to find that there were approximately five hundred people that also came from nineteen different countries to celebrate and pay homage to this unique and humble healing community. Over the last twenty five years, I've seen an explosion of interest around the world in these type of sacred medicines, which have been proven to be remarkably safe and highly effective for treating a wide variety of medical conditions. Clearly, under the protection of the First Amendment, these sacred medicines are completely legal right now. If we as a community were able to embrace the truth of what I'm saying, we could be a beacon of light for this nation and attract many to come and visit us to see and experience what I'm talking about. The national interest in our community would explode almost overnight. This simple idea could easily become a new boom town for Beaumont for those seeking. This simple idea could easily become a new boom town for Beaumont for those seeking truth, healing, love, unity and compassion. Any city in the nation could easily do what I'm asking you to consider. I'm now talking to people in Austin and Jacksonville, Wyoming, who are also excited about this opportunity. I would strongly like Beaumont to be the first to embrace this extraordinary opportunity we have before us. If another city chooses to get ahead of us on this simple ideal, then we lose out in being the first in the nation to embrace this amazing possibility. So I say now, in the name of Almighty God, let our community open our hearts and minds and seize this wonderful and profound possibility we have before us, and I feel that together we could change the world. I'm happy to speak more of this vision to any group that's interested and answer any one questions on this.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerome Alexander.
Good afternoon, Councilman Jerome Alexander, eleven eighteen Everland Street, Beaumont, take the seven, 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 oh, one. I've come today to speak, I had a chance to go to the candidate's campaign reelection. And I listened to everybody and I enjoyed it. But Mr. Phil Shaw made a, Mr. Phil Shaw made a statement about some people, how to use social media to characterize certain issues. So now that they have four black candidates on the fly, and it's on social media and it's posted and stuff, and people have a problem with it. And I'm not understand, well, no, I understand, but I guess they don't understand that because these four group, these group of people come together as one and say, look, we want to take the accountability, if you vote for us and put us in the council seats, then we will take the city forward. So a bunch of people got a problem with that, but you know, as us as people, we need to unify and come together as one and put our people in this position that we know that, you know, that they best sit for these positions to help us in our communities. Because a lot of people that come, and when it's time to reelect, they come, we ain't never seen them. But I know Mr. Phil Shaw, Mr. Ladonna, don't have nothing against the other people, Mr. AJ, you have came, Mr. Wes, you have came, and Ms. Mouton. But these people like Mr. Samuel, Mr. AJ, this brother here, Ms. Mouton, they all, Ms. Ladonna, they all come in the community and work with us. You know, they help us the kids, they help put programs together and stuff for the kids. The other candidates, we don't really see them till after this time, you know, to vote and stuff like this, man. And so I don't think y'all should look at it as a race issue. I think y'all should go back and look at the halftime show of the Super Bowl, and you will really see what's really going on. Thank you, have a blessed day.
Thank you, sir.
Addie Allen.
Addie Allen, ninety-six, ninety-five, Gross, Beaumont, Texas. The city manager, the mayor, council, and all of the administrators. Voting time, and I've seen signs all over Beaumont, and I know there's issues with one of our councilmen about signs. You know, some say elect, some say reelect. So you know, there's, there's some issues there, but reelect, elect. I planned to vote, I went to the forum, and for the citizens that didn't, they missed. But I'm standing here because since twenty-three, I've been standing here talking about sidewalks. And of course, we've had a change in administration. And when Bart was here, he did file for a grant, that grant didn't go through. So are we going to continue to have the state to take care of our children when, you know, the ordinance says we do sidewalks, the city does? So why do we continue doing this? Twice in this setting, we were told that sidewalks had been taken off of the budget. The Boys Play, BU, Westbrook, they do real well. You know, I was just thinking, couldn't have a parade to celebrate them, you know, in a big hoopla manner, but a million dollars was spent at the airport. That's a confined space. That would be an idea. That was tax money, I do believe. The other thing that I'm really concerned about, city manager, is I did personal research on getting an alarm system for the city of Beaumont, because we do have climate change. Look at the weather today versus yesterday. And we've had some alerts. I didn't get a three-one-one alert in December, I have registered. Why can't we do something to deliver services to our people here that pay taxes? We've had two water increases, you know, and we still have brown water. I realize that you have a lot on your plate, and there's big things that need to be done, but you deliver services. Why in Amelia, we still have brown water? You know, you talk about putting chlorine in the water, different things are happening, but I stand here asking you, you want our votes, do something for the citizens. You've done the discount for the water, and that's appreciated, but not just senior citizens, there's other citizens that need something in return. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving. Good luck on your election.
Deborah Hunter.
Deborah Hunter, I live in ninety-one, fifty, Main Street. I'm a lifelong residency in Beaumont, excuse me. I come before the council today to complain about the trash condition in my neighborhood. I have homeowners and home renters. Our trash is picked up on Monday. I have a neighbor that utilizes the city as part of his private business to deliver the, get rid of the trash. I have been working with the code enforcement officer, and he has been doing a great job. He comes out and he talks to the individual. He has to have police escort to speak to this young man. It's awful. This morning, yesterday, the trash was picked up, the garbage was picked up. They could not pick up the garbage at his house because of his trash was so close to the garbage can and the mailbox, they couldn't put the clamps on the garbage can to dump it. So when the trash man came out and picked up the trash that he had brought from his job for the city to dispose of, he was able to put out more garbage cans. I'm just here asking that we support the code enforcement. I know that there's, the police department's short, and it's not high up on the agenda, but it's high on my agenda when I have to get up in the morning and pick up toilet paper out of my yard. Because this individual chooses not to buy by the roofs. I just ask that we continue to support the code enforcement and see if we can get something done about the situation. I know my councilman is Mr. Getz, and I'd like for you to take a trip out there with me today to see what's going on, because yesterday was the garbage. I went, I took pictures of how they thrown the trash in the drainage ditch. DD six came out and cleaned the ditch. And what happens? They throw punching bags in the garbage can, because I would not allow them to hang the punching bag from my tree, because I didn't want to be responsible if someone got hurt. I asked the young man not to do it. He gave me his spill on it, and he did what he wanted to do, and I did what I had to do. I cut it down. They took it and dumped it in the ditch after the drainage ditch had cleaned it. I just ask that we get some behind the code enforcement and get something done about this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I have, mayor.
All right, thank you for the public comments today. Is there a motion in a second for?
Just, just a moment, I'm sorry. What's your name? Do you have his info? He did that yesterday at the planning and zoning meeting, so you should have checked in with Lisa in the back. I think Alina was supposed to let you know that yesterday, but you can go, go ahead. What was the name again?
William.
Your name?
Twenty-six, seventy, FM ninety-two, Stills. I've owned apartments here in Beaumont for forty-two years. And I had a situation, first off, I want to say, code department's been wonderful. They're working with me with this problem. Had a house at Lamar, six, nine, seven, Caston Street, it was red tagged, and I have no problem with that. I understand why, I understand you got rules and all like that. So I went out there a few days after it was tagged, and I walked in there and they had stole six stoves, two fridges, all the ceiling fans and a bunch of other stuff out of there, and it was trash in the backyard. Beyond that, they tore out the ceilings and went after the wire up in the attic. Now, I urge you to reconsider the protocols about notification. I know they send out certified letters, and I would ask that you wait to see if you give a response from a certified letter before you put the red placard up there, because that's an invitation to the criminals. Here they come. If you'll notice, in town, there's, there's not as many rent signs, for sale signs, builder signs, for this very reason. Basically, houses causes this problem. And so, and there's much more than I can do in three minutes, there's a lot more. So I urge all of you, any of you, to please contact me, my contact information is back there. Also, I had another house, which is a homeless person has tore out the vinyl siding on the side of the building. And I had him arrested five or six times, he just comes back the next day. We got a crime problem in Beaumont, it's bad. Two houses down from where this incident happened with the red tag, I was cleaning another one of my properties, I walked out, my tires were slashed, my phone was stolen out of my car while I was there. This is broad daylight, and this is out there at Lamar. Now, I know the police are doing all they can, and I appreciate help from the district attorney and building code has helped them work with me, but I just want to make you aware of this is bad. And what was a doable redo at six, nine, seven, Caston is now massive, thanks to the criminals coming in there and tearing the place apart pieces. And please, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, mayor.
No other public comment? All right. Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda excluding item G for the purpose of recusal.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item G, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. May I have a, on item G, may I have a motion?
Some move for approval of item G.
Second. There is a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda, item G, any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of one Vogel Sank ex ripper muncher pump for the prison lift station, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number one, is there any discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, who motioned? I'm sorry.
Councilman Getz, I think, made the motion.
I seconded.
Phil Shaw, Councilman Phil Shaw.
Sorry, Councilman Phil Shaw.
Thank you.
Now we got it. Now, yes, Councilman Turner?
Yes, sir. For citizens watching, I see the funding source says water revenue bonds. I know we're talking about bond council, and I know we've said some things about infrastructure bonds, but I see water revenue bonds for funding source. So can staff or someone explain exactly what is the water revenue bonds and what's the process and currently doing, or how we're currently doing that?
I can explain that. Revenue bonds, water revenue bonds are, is a way of financing certain city projects. You know, the city would go out to the bond market to borrow money for large projects for water and sewer. And the reason why they're classified as water revenue bonds is that there is a funding source for those bonds, to repay those bonds, that, that is through water and sewer rates that's charged to the citizens. And many, the majority of the water and sewer projects are paid through this manner, allowing the city to borrow funds and, and the city repays those funds back over fifteen to twenty years.
Okay, thank you. And that, that was one of the things, I just wanted, someone asked, and I thought it was proper to make sure, I understand it, but I think it's important for citizens to understand that we are doing these water revenue bonds, and historically the city has been doing it, correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval of item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Council consider a resolution approving the purchase and installation of a twenty-two, nine aspect ratio direct view LED video wall from Ford Audio Video Systems LLC of Houston, Texas for use in the city council chambers and city hall first floor conference room. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number two, is there any discussion? Councilman Neal?
Like it was, Mr. Manager, was this already a budgeted item for this year?
Andrew's coming out, I think it's a budgeted item out of the pig fund.
Correct, it is budgeted in the pig fund.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Getz?
Would you explain for everyone what the pig fund is?
So we have a government channel called Channel Four, which hopefully should be up this week. It's been down for a little bit, but what happens, there's legislation that allows for the government channels to essentially pay back the cities. There's quite a bit of regulation on how we can use that money. And so pretty much the only thing that that money can be used for is something that goes on the government channel, which this, anything in this room qualifies as.
So let me ask how this would actually look. You'd be taking this screen down that goes up and down right now, and it would be a permanent video display up there?
Correct, yes.
So the seal that we have right now that we can see would be removed, and you would have a TV screen up there all the time?
Correct.
We could have a screensaver.
Correct.
Okay. Is this something that's really necessary? I mean, is there something wrong with the way that we do our presentation right now?
So there's several aspects to it. One of them is since we have gone with the agenda software, we aren't making use, full use of all the functionality of the agenda software, because we cannot do it with our current setup. we aren't making use, full use of all the functionality of the agenda software, because we cannot do it with our current setup. When we are able to do the wall, then we'll be able to have a section where it will display all of the agenda items that Tina can do through the software versus what we're doing now. It will also allow us to manipulate, whereas we have just one screen now, this will allow us to manipulate and do other setups to allow for, well, like, for example, when, if we were to have a vendor that needed to do a presentation on Zoom, we would have a section that actually could see that vendor now, and then you could also see their presentation. It just gives us a lot more flexibility with what we can do with the technology.
And again, this would not be coming out of the general fund?
No, correct.
Thank you. There's no other discussion, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Elite Contractors of Kirbyville for the Laura Edition Drainage Improvements Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
For addition Drainage Improvements Project.
Is there a motion?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number three, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Beaumont Independent School District for economic development incentives under the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone Program for the development of a new bus parking and maintenance building. And it comes with the recommendation of denial of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve the denial.
Is there a second for the approval of the denial?
I'll second the request.
All right, we do have a motion in a second for approval of the denial for item number four, is there any discussion?
Question, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Neal, and Councilman Phil Shaw, and Councilman Turner.
So I understand the city's stance on, understand why they're recommending denial based off the empowerment zone. However, can the city still waive the fees? Because it seems like that's what they're asking for anyways.
So the city can waive the fees, that is what they're asking for. But staff's interpretation of the policy, the empowerment zone policy is this does not meet that policy. So specifically, the stated policy of the empowerment zone is to enhance the value of local tax base and increasing economic opportunities. And the concern staff has is, you know, this is a facility of BISD creating, you know, no new additional permanent jobs.
So, once again, I agree with why the city's rejecting it based off the empowerment zone. My question is, is can this be brought back to council to waive the fees, but not do it through the empowerment zone?
As not an economic development tool, as simply a waiving of permit fees?
Just as one taxing entity to the other.
I would think so. If you did it by ordinance.
My recommendation is bring this back by ordinance and waive the fees. Why would you want to tax another taxing, or charge a fee to another taxing entity? All it's going to do is get passed on to the customers, or to the citizens anyways.
I second it.
Mayor, real quick, I do want to comment, though, when we had a bond issued about a decade ago, it was a multi-hundred million dollar effort, and we had, we spent a lot of city staff time. And we collected fees as part of that process to help cover the cost to the city. So I'm just bringing that up if we want to go that direction.
But that was a one-off situation. This is a, this is a nine-point-four million dollar project that shouldn't take that much time for plan review. I understand when you were talking about eighteen different schools, that made sense, you had to hire personnel for that, but not for this.
All right, and Councilman Turner seconded that? Did any?
Yeah, he's, Councilman Turner most seconded Councilman Neal's decision to bring it back to council. No, no, to bring it back to council on the second, on the secondary issue. Yeah, so we got a lot, we got a lot going on right now. So, so there's a motion in a second on the floor to deny the resolution, and there's a request from Councilman Neal, and a second by Councilman Turner to bring it back. It's just a waiver of permit fees.
Councilman Phil Shaw?
Yes, I agree with Councilman Neal. I know that the will of this council is to send a clear message to our school district that we support you, regardless of what the money is. I know that it's our intention to support them. And I would caution us in going down this pathway and sending the wrong message to our school district. There has to be a way for us, a workaround, to support them. And yet, I understand we're not meeting the conditions of this empowerment zone. So, again, I'm just repeating what he said, but I just want to make it clear that that would be my support, to find a workaround and let's support our school district. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Durio?
Exactly how much money we'll be talking about waiving? Dollars?
Approximately sixty thousand.
And I guess this will go to you, Madam City Attorney, for the people that's watching everything. If we don't move, make a motion in a second on an order, on an agenda item, can we discuss it without making a motion in a second?
So council has adopted their own rules, technically, yes, the answer is yes, under Robert's rules of order, you can, you can discuss an item without it having a motion in the second. Council kind of has their own thing, but you can.
And that's what, what's the thing?
So council, for council, y'all have decided that in order for an item to be discussed, that there be a motion in the second presented first.
That's, and I just, for the people that's watching, that's why, if you wonder why I had made a motion for denial and I got a second, because I wanted us to be able to discuss it. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Neal?
To your point, Councilman Durio, we don't even have to vote on this, we could table it, just have staff bring it back to us next week, or next meeting.
But if they bring it back, they'll bring it back this way. You can, you can deny it with the instructions that it be brought back, but if you table it, it comes back this way.
So that gets us to the first motion, that was an approval of the denial that we need to have a vote on.
Correct.
Okay. So, Councilman Durio, do you have a question before we got there?
Yeah, but, Councilman Neal and Phil Shaw, I understand about us working with the school district, but it's sixty thousand dollars. That we just going to waive?
You're not losing sixty thousand, you're just not making sixty thousand.
Man, I, maybe I'm dumb, but same thing to me.
Okay, well, let's go ahead, does anybody else have any comment? If not, let's go ahead and have the, so we're going to vote on the first motion by Councilman Durio, where he voted, I mean, he made a motion to approve the denial. So, all those in favor of approving the denial for item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize, but I, there's, it's with the understanding that we're going to come back.
There's already been a motion in a second to do it, per the adopted rules by council.
Again, but I'm just, there has to be some clarity that, I'm assuming that the council feels the same, that we're going to come back and find a workaround.
So Councilman Neal made a, made a request, and it was seconded by Councilman Turner. There doesn't need to be any discussion or follow-up on it, because the council rules say if one council requests something be added to the agenda and is seconded by another council, then it's automatically put on.
So you're saying we're voting on his motion?
No.
No, we're, his motion doesn't require, his, his request doesn't require any action. He's requested that it be brought back to council, not as a part of the economic.
It won't be done today.
And Councilman Turner has requested, has seconded that motion per council's rules. A council member has requested he's seconded.
I just want to make it clear that we're, it's, that we're in agreement that this will come back. Thank you, Mayor.
So all those in favor of approving the denial, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. And we will have that brought back to us in two weeks. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider authorizing the city manager to enter to an agreement with Bowie Office LLC for economic development incentives under the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone Program for the development of a carpentry and residential construction company. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number five, is there any discussion? Councilman Getz?
What is this facility, Bowie Office LLC? Is it the? That is Anderson Homes, second.
Councilman Turner?
I see this as our second one that comes up for empowerment zone. I think this is an opportunity to kind of educate people in the audience who are watching, who may not know what it is. So if staff or somebody can please explain our empowerment zones and the process.
Yes, sir. So the local empowerment zone is an economic development tool that was set up by the city several years ago that targets certain areas in the city. There are six different zones throughout the city that tries to encourage development, redevelopment within those areas. And so, if there is investment in residential, investment in business in those areas, at a certain level, you can, again, request to the council tax abatement up to seven years of incremental value of city taxes. You can request an abatement of waiver of liens, such as a weed lien or demolition lien, and also a permit fee waiver, like we discussed prior, as well as expedited permit review, which, which, you know, we usually do as a matter of course anyway. But again, it is just a tool to try to encourage redevelopment in these six areas.
And Mr. Boone, how can people apply for some of these empowerment zones?
Right, so I would encourage you to reach out to Economic Development, Christina Loki. She is located at the Planning Community Development Office on the second floor of City Hall. We also have a pretty robust economic development webpage that explains the program, the application. It's a very short application, but also where those zones are located.
Thank you, I think that's some good information and a good tool, and it's good to see the city taking advantage of it.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Getz?
And it should probably be self-evident, but the difference between item four that we were discussing previously involving BISD and item five is that item four doesn't have the possible three-year, one-hundred percent municipal tax abatement, because it's a taxing entity of itself. Number five is a private developer. So, Mr. Ben, what you're telling people is that if they want to come downtown as a private development, such as possibly might be being done at the Gilbert Building, the owners of that building could actually apply for a three-year tax abatement, municipal tax abatement. That's something that we want to make sure that people understand when they're coming downtown to redevelop something, that they have an opportunity to do that. The new people that are taking over the old Sugar's location, that's going to be hearsay. I guess they would also have the opportunity, if they so chose, to do this, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So, you know, now that we have an economic development manager, you know, we're doing a much better job of marketing that program. The key is, I would just say, make sure you have that conversation with us before you start working, because that's one of the key elements. But going back to your point about some of those, depending on, excuse me, depending on the amount of the investment, you can receive up to seven years of city tax abatement.
How would you have, what would you have to do in order to get seven years tax abatement?
Again, make the application, it's a couple pages with our office. We'll review it, make a recommendation like we did today to council, and then council will decide on that.
But you mentioned a difference in amount, how, what's that threshold?
Right, so in, in the policy, it is, let's see, for investment of as little as fifty thousand dollars for residential, you can have one year, but then, yeah, as Ms. Inghman pointed out, five, five million will get you up to the seven years.
Good, good information.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six, please?
Council, council consider a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a PAX PWM two-fifty mixer assembly for use at the south elevated storage tank, and it comes with recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number six, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a standard utility agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number seven. Is there any discussion? Councilman Neal?
So this project's going to be a hundred percent reimbursed, correct? So it says the funding source is water revenue bonds, though.
The water revenue bonds is the pass-through, we have to pay in advance, then request reimbursement.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Vortex Services LLC of Houston, Texas, for the Washington Boulevard sixteen-inch water line replacement project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
So move to approve.
Is there a second? There is a motion in a second for approval of item number eight, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number nine?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to C-Tex Construction Corporation of Beaumont, Texas, for the twenty-third street sanitary sewer trunk line rehabilitation phase one project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There is a motion in a second for approval of item number nine, is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Neal?
Thank you, the, the recommended contractor is about fifty percent less than the engineer's estimate, and about fifty percent less than all the other contractors' estimate. Mr. Williams, does staff feel comfortable with this choice?
We met with the contractor and had that conversation with him before we recommended award and asked them to go back and reevaluate their bid. They did submit to us a letter in writing certifying that they were confident in the bid that they submitted.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Councilman Phil Shaw?
And City Manager, I've seen their name come up before. And City Manager, I've seen their name come up before, of course, and so I'm assuming we have a good record with them and, and, uh, I'm sorry?
A good contractor.
Yeah, and but they, and they've served us well, so we have no reason to believe that this bid would be way too low or they would be unable to perform at this. Okay, thank you.
I've seen the name many times since I've been here on contracts.
No other discussion, all those in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Council to consider an ordinance finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on the property owned by Stacy Marks Burrows at 170 Ferndale Lane with the legal description of S5, L16, and O, L17, B6, Westfield Terrace 4, and order the owners to abate, abate public health nuisances within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting city council authorization to abate said property without further notification to the property owner of, the owner of city council action.
All right, the public hearing is now open.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As you can see, the violations is in, failure to retrieve letter is in chapter 12, and also Roden Harbridge, as well as Mosquito Harbridge in chapter 10. And, um, this property owner has had ample time to bring the property up into compliance. And actually, staff went out this afternoon before this council meeting, and no progress has been made. So here are just a couple of pictures to show you the, the condition that the property is in. Questions?
I think the pictures explain a lot.
Thank you.
Anybody signed up to speak?
I don't have anyone.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10?
Council to consider an ordinance finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on the property owned by Stacy Marks Burrows at 170 Ferndale Lane with the legal description of S5, L16, and O, L17, B6, Westfield Terrace 4, and order, and order the owners to abate public nuisances within 10 days. If the property owner fails to comply within 10 days, staff is requesting city council authorization to abate said property without further notification to the property owner of city council action, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number 10?
So move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 10. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Yes, just, I, I spoke to several neighbors that surround that area about concern and, you know, I just want to let code enforcement know, you know, we support you guys that are going out there doing these jobs, and I think it's important that council shows you with actions and not hinder you from doing your job. So appreciate what y'all do.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the work session?
Thank you, Mayor.
Our, our date.
Work session.
Yeah.
Council to review and discuss downtown proactive code enforcement update. And we have Mr. Bo Hanson to give us a report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. April 2025 marks one year since we began our proactive sweep of downtown properties. So what you're going to see today is an update on what's been accomplished since we began overall. I'm going to pull back to a 30,000-foot view to highlight all that's taken place this past year. So as usual, I've created a, a visual for you to see all the properties by address. The first four columns, as you can see, are all unsafe. However, I've broken them into three categories. So let me call, uh, cover the red column first. Since we first tagged these buildings a year ago, five of them have actually gotten worse or less safe than when we originally, originally tagged them. And then the orange columns represent buildings that have had no progress and still remain unsafe. So if I could pause there, we have and will obviously continue to push for compliance with all of these buildings. This means both filing charges and ongoing progress meetings with the owners. So I want to assure you that we're not just monitoring progress from afar, and we're going to continue a proactive approach with each of them. The blue column are properties that have shown significant progress but haven't quite entered into compliance. And then lastly, the green are those that are completely compliant. Next slide, please. Here's a look at the percentage of safe buildings in the area that we swept. A year ago, we found that only 64% of the buildings in our sweep area were safe. Of the 76 buildings that we inspected and looked at, 27 of them were unsafe for one reason or another. Today, April of 20, uh, 2025, we still have a long way to go. 100% is obviously the goal here, but we have made significant strides. Nearly 80% of our downtown buildings are safe. Next slide, please. I'd like to highlight a few properties to show you what that progress actually looks like. 441 Orleans was hardly secure with rotting wood and other safety concerns. Today, it is the property I continuously point to as a boarding and securing job done extraordinarily well. 680 Park was quickly being consumed by vegetation and deterioration on all sides. Quick story there, last week I had to run over to EOC and parked near the corner of Park and Forsyth. And on all, on three of the four corners of that intersection, there were crews mobilized on three different construction progress, three different construction projects, and work was taking place. That is the progress that we're hoping to see downtown. And then lastly, 44 Main, 444 Main was recently completed. And though it is a small building, it sits so prominently in the parking lots of several local downtown businesses. So all through, throughout downtown, progress is happening. Next slide, please. I want to highlight 336 Orleans also. If you look at the side-by-side there, you may find one minor difference. There was some deteriorating plaster on this building that was quickly dealt with, but that's not why I wanted to highlight it today. Over the last year, this vacant building has had zero break-ins, and I did check with the owner to confirm that. Zero break-ins, and that's the story we want to tell. Secured buildings are safe buildings. It is currently under temporary compliance, which is why we tagged it, but it is safe and a great example of what we are working towards, even if it is a temporary solution. Next slide, please. All right, building safety isn't the only metric of progress, though. What about new businesses? Well, I'm glad you asked. Our office has been encouraged to see several business owners move into our downtown area. I want to take a minute to highlight a few of them, and again, these are those specifically within our sweep area, which was from Main to Natures and then College to Calder. There were several pre-existing projects taking place before April of '24, like a growing church, a great new restaurant, an attorney's office, and revitalized lofts at the corner of Pearl and Forsyth that you can see there at the top. But that's not all. There are brand-new projects that we, we were all very excited to see. We have more residential units coming to 527 Forsyth. Also, Stoney Pettin and his team, a longtime partner of Beaumont, made the decision to bring Anderson Homes, as you heard earlier, to 450 Bowie. And I'd like to highlight the last two on the last slide. If you could, next slide, please. So Corey Green took a portion of Brent Coon's building and opened Irongate Studios, where they offer tattoos, a small hair salon, photography studio, even fitness and jewelry sales are taking place. It's a very eclectic occupancy, and they just got their certificate of occupancy two weeks ago. And then Tyler Wharton teamed up with Jen Trimbeth to open For the Record. Not only can you swing in and shop their vinyl collection, but they've also opened a small music venue, which has brought people downtown every weekend for a few weeks now. Next slide, please. And lastly, I want to take a moment to personally thank this council for working hard beside us to pursue building safety in our downtown area. That's something that's obviously very important to me and our building codes team, and we still have a long way to go, but we're seeing a positive trajectory thanks to your leadership. So again, personally, thank you for working alongside us in this endeavor. Any questions or comments?
Councilman Durya?
So the 15 properties that's not, non-compliant, how many different owners is there?
I don't have that information readily available, but it has not changed from our last presentation. I take that back. One property owner has entered into full compliance of the last presentation I gave.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, will you take us into the next work session on the, about the parade ordinance?
Council to review and discuss changes to the parade ordinance. And our city attorney is going to handle this item.
So at the request of council, we were asked to look at possible changes to our existing parade ordinance to allow for more flexibility in the ordinance. Next slide. And so the presentation today will cover our current language. We'll review some comparable cities, talk about the major differences between the two, look at some proposed language, and discuss next steps. So in our current language, which I will circulate now, it basically just highlights that we distinguish between commercial and non-commercial parades, but we don't really have a definition for what a non-commercial parade looks like. We do require permit fee and applications be submitted within 30 days of events, and we make exceptions for the Christmas parade, the MLK parade, and the Nature's River Parade, noting that the city does not have a Christmas parade anymore. Some of the other cities require insurance, and I'll just go ahead and pass that out as well. They require insurance, permit fees determined by the size of the event, and the average application time is about 60 days. That is a two-sided document. You'll notice that the highlighted portions were cities that were provided by the citizen who hosts the, or organizes the 4th of July parade in Calder Park. The other cities that we pulled were basically city comparables that we look at when we do other comparisons for that time. So some of our proposed changes are in that original document that I circulated with you. They are highlighted in yellow. We added definitions for clarity. We provided options for alternative routes to, hopefully to reduce expenses. We also proposed an increased application period, and we changed the appeal process. So one of the major changes that we proposed was adding a definition for what a non-commercial parade looks like to allow individuals that have about 50 participant vehicles or 50 people participating or less to not necessarily forego the, uh, be a part of the formal process. We also asked that the permit period be increased to 60 days since that was the average, and because of the appeals process or the alternative process might add time to that. So just allow time for staff to kind of, uh, have a chance to work with those individuals. The biggest change would be, if you look at on page, I'm sorry, in section 20.06.033, we had two alternative languages that could possibly be added, one of which allows for a recommendation to, for wa- for the fee waivers to come from a recommendation from the, based on a recommendation from the chief at the discretion of the city manager. So that was a big change as well. Another big change is in the application process, allowing for, uh, internally for it to be reviewed for approximately 14 days, just because it does impact more than just the police department sometimes. And this is for our bigger parades. It does require or touch more staff members in that regard. The next major change would be in our appeal process. Essentially, what we did is we added another layer. If someone doesn't like the recommendation that the police chief has provided, they can now appeal that decision to the city manager. The city manager can look at it, review it, and make a determination. If they're unhappy with the city manager's determination, they can request that the city manager add it, I'm sorry, send a letter to the mayor asking it be added to the next available council agenda. It doesn't require council to call a special meeting, but it will be placed on the agenda for you guys to look at. You'll look at, um, basically their entire appeal process, the recommendation that was given by the chief, what they're complaining of, the information that was reviewed by the city manager, and then council will be able to make a decision, and that decision will be final. The big, the biggest takeaway for this is that we did allow for it to kind of have a layer in between. The previous process went straight from the city, uh, the police chief directly to council without allowing for there to be some internal workings or kind of for it to be settled or negotiated on its own. So that will allow for some additional flexibility and discretion on the part of the manager. Next slide. So next changes, or next step, sorry, would be for us to review this internally. As we discussed before, ordinance changes are kind of roundtable with the, with the departments that they impact. We'll bring us back to city council, place it on the agenda for some, for city council action. Obviously, the biggest component of this would be potentially the police department, but we do have a special events ordinance that this could potentially impact. So we're also going to be bringing in our, uh, Events Facilities Department for them to have some discussion on this as well. And then obviously, after council approves it, we'll place it into ACMT, so we'll make sure that people know the changes that are being implemented. For the most part, we really do have people who kind of get ahead of the parade process, so people aren't requesting at the last minute usually. But we will want to kind of advertise and promote, making sure that people get started early so we can factor out the best possible routes with the least impact to the city, making sure that it's not cost prohibitive. I would also like to point out that most, um, most of the cities that we looked at had, uh, had a requirement for insurance. We didn't put that in our current ordinance, however, that is something that council, uh, if, if directed, we can consider. The mayor and I had a chance to discuss it, and he was kind of concerned about how much event insurance would be. It varies based on participants, but, um, we do require event insurance for individuals that rent our facilities and for them to list the city of Beaumont as additional insured. I just kind of, if I wanted to do a parade in my neighborhood and wanted everybody in my block radius to attend, keeping in mind that I probably have, the average household has four individuals included, and maybe somebody brings a guest, we were very generous with that number. It would probably cost around $400 to get insurance, which is relatively reasonable. The price gap between that, there's not a big jump in price if you go from 200 to 1,000. The price is pretty similar, couple, couple bucks. So, like I said, we didn't propose that, but, um, in, in the part of the discussions, that might be something that comes up. Just wanted council to be aware of it. Overwhelmingly, most of the cities we looked at did have a, have an ordinance, so we're not saying that we should get rid of our ordinance. Some cities close nearby don't even allow for parades. Needling Grove said, no parades. We don't do that over here. Some of the other cities did base their permit fees, had fixed prices, and some of them based it on manpower and the size of the parade. So that is something that's kind of, council might want to consider as well. Next slide. And that concludes the presentation. You can jump right into questions.
One of my concerns is I just see the 60-day, and for schools that have won state championships, they're not going to know that 60 days in advance. They're going to win the state championship. So I mean, we could have a plan on the shelf, but in terms of actually filing for the parade, I, I think that could, there, we could have, uh, some language in there that would allow for if a, to have a plan in place for such events. Is that something doable?
So I think the, the 60-day time plan really comes into play for determining routes and notifying individuals. But if we already have a set parade route, I mean, we only, we know the two high schools, so we know that it's going to be somewhere around there, right? So if they have a standard parade route, then we could probably reduce the timeline for them just because we already know what route they're going to use. They already have a method of identifying people. We can obviously, you know, promote and get that in the neighborhood. But the, the timeframe is really to schedule the route. So even individuals who already have a set route, and maybe we can, if that's something you want, we can schedule that into the ordinance. But it's also about manpower. BIC has their own manpower, so it would really come into play for, for parades where the city needs to accommodate for that. And, and again, the 60-day was more about allowing, not to be punitive, but to allow the appeals process if necessary. And, and again, the 60-day was more about allowing, not to be punitive, but to allow the appeals process, if necessary, to take full place.
I just wanted to be in there about Lamar winning national championships too, and we would have parades for that.
Got it.
Councilman Getz?
So I was going to say the same thing that the mayor did. The idea of having plans on the shelf, we all, we know the Calder Place neighborhood goes the same route every year. It never varies. BISD can't come up with set plans in conjunction and collaboration with the city to come up with an approved route, hopefully that would not impact major state highways any longer.
We also added a definition for major streets as well.
Thank you. Always thinking, I like that. So yeah, I think that those parts of the ordinance could be tightened up.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Durio.
Thank you, man. I appreciate you. A few questions. With the adding of that definition with the major streets, again, like from a staff perspective, why was that included?
So addition, like one of the biggest things, what we saw in some of the neighborhoods that we looked at that do have parades, most of them are enclosed, and I'll use the example of Fairington. Fairington has an inch in the back and an inch in the front, but most of the interior streets are not, would not be considered major streets. Some of the other neighborhoods in town, although enclosed, people use those as through, through streets for major traffic. So there's, there's heavy traffic. So if you were doing a parade, let's just say in the Brownstone addition, which is one way in and one way out, you block one entrance. You don't need a million cops. You just block one entrance and you tell everybody, hey, no driving between 9:00 and 9:30, we're having a parade. And so you're, you're only impacting one entrance, and you don't need as many police officers for, for that purpose, right? But if you have a neighborhood that's more open, that has more arterial streets that are going to touch more streets, and let's just use Thomas Road, for example, that has, you know, thorough streets and people drive down that road all the time. Not super busy, but you know, off Gladys, potentially off Delaware. So it may have more traffic, people turned down from Calder to kind of drive through. It's harder because you'd have to block off this one. If you're going to cross over Calder, you need to block off Calder, which is a major street if you want to go all the way down, right? So that would have a more impact on traffic. So we wanted to kind of put people on notice, for lack of a better term, that if we had to impact major streets, major arteries, that that may increase the cost. Again, to encourage people to maybe get with police to discuss alternative routes.
Okay, understood. So it can happen, but we want to encourage them to get with our law enforcement in advance to look at alternative routes. Okay, I'm fine with that. My, my second question was, issue that may not have nothing to do with ordinance, but our fees, have our fees changed or would the fees impact when it comes to this?
So honestly, I, when we started this process, really didn't know much about our parade fees until we met Ms. Leonard. But yes, our, our parade fees over the years have went up. They are based on, you know, barricades and planning. So like I said, some cities have set fees. Some cities do based on how many intersections you're impacting. So it's based on the size and the length of the parade. If council kind of wanted to look at mitigating fees, there's several ways we could do it. We could look at how many, keeping in mind that it needs to be self-sustaining so that it, it's not a expense to the city. But you can look at, you know, if you're, can base it on a, a number of things we're going to do a set fee. The average parade costs this much, and so that's going to be the average parade cost, which would probably be cost prohibitive for some people who are having very small parades and be beneficial to someone who has a very large parade. I think the fairness is to kind of keep it where it's based on how much it's going to cost, like in terms of how many sections we have to block off, which is why we said an alternative route could reduce the amount of the cost of the parade.
Well, I'm, I'm open. I, I, I think small neighborhood parades should be nowhere near in the ballpark if a major parade. So I, I'll go and recommend that. And my second thing is, when it comes to fees for policing or protection of the neighbors in the neighborhood, or whether it be a major parade, can you kind of talk to those fees and how those fees establish? Is it a fee that the city manager's established or is a fee that's in agreement? How does that work?
So that's a loaded question, so let me break it down.
Thank you.
Multiple ways. So it's not really something that the city manager is a part of first and foremost. He does have the ability to waive fees per ordinance. You know, he can, the city's already made exceptions for certain parades, but if, if the city manager decides to, or to be a city partnership, he has that discretion and then he can waive fees. But as it relates to policing, our police have a, have a civil service contract, and so their extra job rate is determined by their contract. And so if they're having to work that as overtime rate or as extra job rate, then it would be at that rate. Same and similar if they worked at the fair. They have a, a extra job rate. They also have a contract that allows for them to, or basically states that they get paid holiday pay for certain holidays. So if the parade falls on a holiday, on a day where that officer is required to work overtime, then he'll be at his holiday overtime rate. And that's his contractual, that's the city's contractual obligation for that. So we are required, if, if their officer presence is required there, that is the contractual rate for which we have to pay him.
Okay, and my, and my last question is, okay, the city manager waives fees. In theory, that sounds great from the last meeting I was in. He waives fees, but it still comes out of the budget, correct? So yeah, we may be waiving the fee, but is it still paid out of the police department's budget?
So when you say you waive a fee, what you're saying is the, the individual doesn't pay. The officers, the staff, the people participating are still being paid. So it's really a waiver to the, the organizer. It's not a, like, nobody's donating time. They still have to be paid. So again, let's just use the, the MLK parade, because that is a parade in the ordinance for which the city has waived fees. We absorb that cost. Those individuals who work that parade, staff, police officers, events facility, any and all city employees who, who participate in that parade for the purpose of making sure that it is safe, well-organized and well-put-together are paid by the city. That cost is not passed on to the organizers of the MLK parade.
All right, with that being said, I just want the community to understand every time the fee is waived by the city manager, it still eats into the police department's budget. I recently talked to some members of the police department, and I was educated on it. I think it's important that the community understands from a budgeting standpoint, yeah, the neighborhood or the organization may not pay that fee, but it still comes out of the police department's budget. And that's money, sometimes if they don't know in advance, it's not budgeted. So I think it's important, kind of similar to planning and zoning, or, or similar to our community black, block grant funding, that we kind of can get an idea of where is our stop cushion? Because before you know it, if each council member comes to our city manager, one parade a person, before you know it, the fees can get outrageous and they can eat into our, our public safety budget. So I thought, I think it's important that we understand that while we're discussing this.
And the Councilman Durio, I think, had asked, did you, and then Councilman Getz?
On those fees, if the, say the citizen go his own, or we pay it, I guess that's not reimbursed to us. I'm talking about as far as the salaries for the officers.
Who would reimburse us?
People that wanted to get a parade.
No, no, so if we waive it, no, it's like...
No, no, I'm not talking about if we waive it. If we don't waive it, nevermind.
No, you, so if we don't waive it, then they are invoiced for the...
Is that, is that money used to pay the office, the overtime?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And one of the, two other questions. On the, I guess it's kind of the same, right? Is there a ordinance for, some folks have approached me about blocking off streets to do block parties. Is there an ordinance that covers that?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
It is? Is it kind of like this?
So there's a, a street closure policy to that effect, and I, I believe it's, it's still a permit through traffic. There have been individuals that have same and similar. But for that regard, as you're just barricading, we're just re-diverting traffic away. I mean, if you're in a cul-de-sac, it's not really a big deal. But if you're, for churches that are, who sit in the middle and they want to close off the, the streets to have a, a festival or a fair, that, that kind of thing.
And they would go through, I guess, the same process?
They would go, they would go through traffic.
Okay. All right, and my last question is for Councilman Neil. Ms. Allen mentioned having parades at the airport. Is that feasible?
You have to ask the city manager.
Why'd I ask you? Because I know you're a pilot.
So I, I can help with that. The answer is no. There's a lot of aviation rules and regulations that deal with the airport. And I know people think that that's a lot of, that's city-owned property, so a lot of stuff can go on. But because of aviation rules and the federal rules around that, you, you just can't just be out there willy-nilly. We, some of our other organizations have did like air education and aviation education out there in the process to allow people to be out there, children included. It's very extensive, and it does require a lot. And as a matter of fact, when they're out there in, in specific areas, they're not even like flying at that point, just for safety. So a parade at the airport would be very disruptive to the operation of the airport and probably cost more money than, than it's worth. There is, there are several other alternative routes on and around the neighborhoods where Beaumont United and Westbrook exist that, that would lean themselves to be less impactful to a major artillery road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Getz?
I'm mindful of the constitutional prohibition about giving city money, resources away without being paid for it. How do we get around that when we waive fees? Are we saying that there's a, a public purpose for doing it, or how does that work?
So when you, when it's a city-sponsored event, then it's considered to be part. So for example, the MLK parade, and at one point, the city was a co-host of the Christmas parade. So we helped put on that event, right? And so if you're putting on the event and it's a cosponsored event, the city doesn't charge itself, right? So basically, we just say, you do this part and we'll do this part, and it becomes a budgeted expense. When you have an event that does not serve a, a public purpose, a city purpose or whatever, it's just a private individual putting on an event and the city says, we'll cover that, it doesn't meet the bill of a city-sponsored event where it's essentially something that the city is providing to the citizens. So in order for it to do, to rise to that level, you say, hey, we're going to cosponsor the event. It changes the necessity of the event in its entirety. Our staff is kind of more involved in the planning, and before you know it, a small neighborhood parade has become a full-on city production. Because once we're attached to it, there are some, for lack of a better term, there's some rules that come with accepting daddy's money, and you got to play by the rules, right? So when you want to have a small intimate affair, and that's fine, you can kind of do it your way. But once the city's attached, like once we, we have the Juneteenth Festival down here, I think, you know, was, a lot of other people do their own, but we're responsible for all the people's safety attached to that event, once we put our name on it. So once, once the city's name on it, there's a heightened responsibility that we make sure that the event is safe and that it meets all ADA requirements so that all citizens from all demographics can, can come and experience that.
So is the Calder Place parade considered something co-hosted by the city at this point?
It is not.
So let me go on record. I, I love that parade, and I want to see it continue. And one of the concerns expressed, and I know that the organizer, Ms. Leonard, met with the city manager to discuss all of this recently. I think Councilmember Neil was involved too. But it's not being co-hosted by the city, and so how are we addressing?
So one, again, we can't write, we can't write a, a, an exception for one person. So what we tried to do, what my objective was to do is to try to implement a, a, some, some potential alternatives and exceptions that may be beneficial to Calder Place and Ms. Leonard. If I had to pick one, it would be that choosing an alternative route may be her better option. I know they stage at, at the Harris, at BIC Harrison Center, and that crosses over a major route. Maybe staging somewhere else or trying to use a different route that doesn't cross over as many major streets. The biggest problem is that their neighborhood is one of the ones that kind of is centered between two major streets where, you know, people would pass through. So maybe picking a route that only impacted one of those sides instead of going through across the entire neighborhood, maybe you just go through a section and not impact the entirety of that. So maybe the biggest exception would probably be to choose a different route and working with the police department to choose a route, changing the route. And I know that the parade has been going on for a very long time, and the route is probably sentimental to some extent, but you know, sometimes change is good.
Well, of course, having participated in that parade many times and, you know, knowing that the route is what it is, part of the desirability and charm of that parade is that it is going through a residential neighborhood where people sit out on their, in their yards, on lawn chairs and the curbs. So to take that away really kind of diminishes the, the nice nicety of the parade. But as you just pointed out, it, there's a lot of arterial streets that connect to those streets, and to block them all off is, is daunting because the, it's not just you put a barricade up there, but you have to have a police officer with each barricade so that you don't have some knucklehead try to move the barricade and end up running a vehicle through the parade route. So understanding that everybody wants that parade to continue, did, Mr. Manager, did y'all come up with something to help ensure that's going to happen next year?
No, the, the proposed resolution was to redo the ordinance, to rewrite the ordinance to allow council ability to approve the, the, the happening of the parade. That was kind of what we talked about.
But I'm not seeing how this change really helps that situation.
So essentially, it does because, one, we've already established that they are not a fan of the police chief's recommendation. They can now appeal it to the city manager. And if the city manager is unable to come up with a viable solution, if they're not in line with the proposed route that the city is, would suggest in order to reduce expensive, then it does come in council. And it, it does allow council the, the final discretion to, to either approve their, their original route to, to say, you know, no officers, that this many officers. It allows council a lot of, a lot of authority and shifts it over here.
But then we come square with your concern about possible violation of the constitution.
So I'm not saying that you waive fees. No, council can say, you know what? We don't think that you need police officers at all. Go have your parade.
Well, we know what's going to happen next year. It's on a holiday where police officers by contract are going to get three and a half times their rate, which makes the fees cost prohibitive, prohibitive for this organization. They won't be able to do the parade if they're charged that kind of a mountain fees. So I'm trying to be proactive and, and look down the road for what's coming in a few months. Changing the ordinance is good, but again, we're stuck with, well, we just can't, you know, say, give away money to an organization that is not hosting or co-hosting with the city. So would one possibility be that the organizers of that parade seek to bring the city in as a co-host, like the MLK parade?
Possibly, but council could also just say, you don't need any officers. Or you need less officers.
I, I, I don't know that anybody on council would view that as a, as a good option, so.
Councilman Neil, then Councilman Durio, then Councilman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Mr. Williams and, and Madam Attorney for bringing this back to us. We did have a lengthy meeting with specifically the Calder Place Parade here, I don't know, two or three weeks ago. And so the, kind of the, a little bit of the backstory, just so everybody understands why this even got brought to us today. So for, she's had this parade since like 2004 or 2005, so approximately 20 years. And over the years, the fee has been somewhere between $200 and $300, if my memory is correct on that. This year, she gets the quote from the city, and it's somewhere in the $5,000 neighborhood. But she's also told that next year is going to be somewhere in the $10,000 neighborhood. And so here you are, you have a private little neighborhood that is doing this. They're not a 501(c)(3) or HOA, so there's not any money to pay $5,000 or $10,000. The parade's about 20 minutes long, 30 minutes maybe. And so the whole purpose behind bringing this to us today... And so, the whole purpose behind bringing this to us today was what can we do to help out neighborhoods like that? Hopefully, that's not the only Fourth of July parade in Beaumont. Hopefully, that this can encourage, or we can figure out a way to encourage them to have more throughout the city. But it's gotta be affordable. And I don't personally want to see a 20-year-old parade just get flushed down the drain. I'd like to see, surely, there's something we as a city can do to help. But it's gotta be affordable.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Turner.
The reason for the, uh, increase in the price is because the officers, the, by their contract, they'll be working on a day when they getting their holiday pay or whatever.
So, originally, and just, just kind of roll it all the way through, this, the traffic officers, uh, throughout the history of the parade would just kind of go, they were already on duty. And so, it's like the councilman said, it's early in the morning, go by. This particular year, there's a, it's on a weekend, so most of them are taking off. So, in order to accommodate them, they would have to be on overtime. So, it's the overtime plus the holiday pay, um, that they're entitled to receive. So, that does increase the cost exponentially.
But wouldn't they be?
We just don't have the amount of people. So, the, the, the biggest problem is that there's just not enough people on duty to cover it.
Couldn't they just change the date of the parade instead of doing it on that day? Would, I mean, when they come in and we can inform them, hey, this is the day, this is the reason it's gonna cost if you move the date to another day?
So, again, it's a Fourth of July parade, so it's.
They could still do it on the fifth, or the third.
So, I, I, I believe that all of those, all of those conversations were had. But I believe, again, it's a Fourth of July parade that's hosted on the morning of Fourth of July, kind of to kick off the festivities of the, of the day and of the holiday. The city wasn't necessarily interested in trying to like change their traditions. But again, one of the solutions that, that is option and available is for them to have an alternative route that may, um, not require them to cross over so many arterial roads, which may require them to have less officers, um, in order to maintain the safety of the citizens. The other thing again is that, um, council now has final authority on reviewing this process. If they, if you were to adopt, um, the proposed changes, you would have final authority over, um, over the process. And you can just kind of say, we only think an officer needs to be here and here and go with God.
We, we can do that and go against the recommendation of the traffic unit or the police department?
You like?
I still think, you know, if, if they're aware of that, I mean, if one of the options is to change the route, I think an option could be to change the date.
Again, these are all just proposed changes. These don't exist in the current ordinance, the, uh, which is why we're, the, the marching orders were to find solutions that allow for, um, greater flexibility. In some of the, in the other ordinance that we reviewed, like I said, there, there wasn't a lot of this. And most of the, the neighborhoods, um, that we looked at that do have longstanding parades didn't share some of the unique, um, aspects that, that this particular neighborhood does. And since that it was anchored by two major, um, artillery roads. Some of them are more enclosed, so it's a, you just kind of drive in. And like I said, have, didn't have multiple entrances, but just had one or two, um, entrances or, um, or just where you can just kind of block. Or the parade only took place in one section, so they were able to kind of just enclose or block off different exits. So, I think alternative routes, um, is a big one. And I think that the changes that we put forth, again, although they're not specific to this particular incident, uh, the Calder Place incident, it, it will be viable to other neighborhoods who want to have, um, parades or want to do their things. Also, we do, um, the city does have a block closure ordinance. We don't necessarily promote, uh, block parties. I don't think that's allowed under the ordinance, but there is an ordinance that allows for road closures for specific things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Turner?
Uh, just a few suggestions since we on the topic of, if these are possibilities. What about maybe instead of officers, maybe departments who do streets? If it's a, because the, the hangup is, you know, by the ordinance or the collective bargaining agreement, they get a minimum of two hours. If the parade is 15 minutes, it's a minimum of two hours. There's a possibility that it could be offset with maybe staff. Or another suggestion would be, when we met, I actually got the opportunity to attend a meeting with Taylor and, or Councilman Neal, I apologize, Taylor. But when we met, uh, the, the, the young lady came up with a suggestion. She came from the Austin area and kind of seen this in Austin and implemented it in Beaumont. But in Austin, the constables actually volunteered. And that caused that neighborhood not to even have that fee because the constables actually volunteered their time. The constables who served that area, they volunteered their time for their parade. So, it's, it's data option.
So, yeah, if they wanted to have, um, licensed peace officers, um, secure that, that, I guess that would be something we can consider. I know we have, um, other residents that kind of do that. That would be a question that we can bring up when we roundtable it with the police chief to see how he feels about it. One of the biggest things for that is just making sure that, that it's safe and secure. So, if they're gonna say, we're gonna have security provided by the sheriff's office. Like I said, BISD did their own security for their parade.
Yeah, I just would hope, you know, we, we would be considerate as possible of working with solutions. And I, I get it, all the stipulations and problems, but sometimes I think we overcomplicate things that could be simple.
Cal, uh, city manager?
Uh, Councilmember Turner, that was one of the things brought up at that meeting was other law enforcement agencies coming in. And, and this Chief Ottencheck was at that meeting, you know, he, they have a concern about continuity of operations and, and you get different law enforcement agencies in there and things could not be consistent and something could happen. So, they, they do have concerns about bringing them in and to do that, for sure. You know, I don't know, there should be a city determining opinion, but, uh, it, it does it serve a public purpose, it's a public good. I think it does, but I'm not the city attorney. And in that case, I think the city manager could do a partnership with them and we could work something out. But it's, it all hinges on that interpretation, I think. You know, I would be very, I'm not gonna say that. I don't want to compromise safety. And, you know, I compromise a lot of things, but not safety. So, I, I'd rather we do what's gonna keep the people safe. And we'll work with the other consequences. But I don't, I, I don't think the city should do anything to compromise safety in that situation. And if we can look at doing what we need to do as far as, um, uh, public purpose, public good, and having a partnership with them, you know, I'd be willing to weigh the fee and we just have to eat it and find it.
Right. And I think one of our takeaways from this is in terms of looking at, uh, budget items in the future for parades. Because I agree that, you know, we've had a death in a, in a cosponsored parade years ago in our city. And, uh, if a child or a car went through a, a blockade and we didn't have police there or we didn't have police understanding our system and somebody was injured, nobody would think, well, the conversation we're having today doesn't make sense. So, I, I, I want to defer to our, our law, our local law enforcement that enforce, uh, Beaumont PDs because I think it's more practical since they're here.
So, several years ago, we did have a, um, a, a death as it relates in our, in our Christmas parade. And that kind of changed the way we did it. And just, um, within the past several years, there's always an issue with somebody disregarding a barricade, which is why most of the barricades now are no longer just barricaded and unmanned. Most of them are barricaded and manned with either a police car or officers on, on, on motor, on motorcade, just to kind of make sure that there's a presence, um, especially when the parade route is still active. As it relates to, does it serve a public purpose? You know, obviously, if, if it's open to the public and it's, you know, providing, you know, the city does provide or has, has provided with some of our events, enjoyment and entertainment, um, to the public. Like I said, our Events Facilities Group does over 500 events a year, Emily. So, uh, we are slowly, you know, getting into that, you know, making sure that we do that. So, if it's, I think that the organizer did say that the, the parade was open to the public. So, then if we're, if it's a city partnership, then obviously it does trying to change the structure. If people from outside the neighborhood are gonna kind of show up and park, then again, by nature of the event, we may be making this bigger than what they want. And so, we have to be careful about, like, again, accepting, accepting that because it may become, people come and now we have a problem with parking and, and making sure that those other ulterior factors. But, um, she did say that it was open to the public and, and they do invite members of the public to attend.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, uh, you know, traffic, people driving, they don't take heed to an officer with a gun at an intersection and go through it. So, a city employee out there from public works is, is not always the best option in trying to put them out there, Councilmember Turner, uh, for sure. Uh, I'd be willing to work on that if they agreed to say, hey, it's open to the public. And we might as well say it to the public good and go that route with it.
And I know historically.
To do that as the city manager.
Historically, you know, they post the event on social media beforehand to let people know. So, I, I would think, uh, it is open to the public by that definition. And, but we could have good parking issues over there. But good thing is, Fourth of July, most mornings, I've been over there several, there's not a lot of people stirring, you know, on Fourth of July, but that could certainly change. Councilman Durio?
I know during the, uh, Juneteenth celebration, they have, they use civilian security guards to guard the, uh, the barriers during the Juneteenth, like when we're coming in the park by, uh, by the library and different places. And they, they have civilians standing there guarding those barriers.
I think they use them to, at the entrances. They don't use them to secure the perimeter of areas where we don't want cars. The actual perimeter is secured by police officers. The, the private, um, security is at the entrance of the actual festival.
Okay.
I'll let, let you in when you're driving around the back way, Chris. Yes, Councilman Turner?
So, so that fee, when we had, uh, nah, I'm kind of looking at numbers. So, when we have our Juneteenth Festival, and it normally doesn't fall on Juneteenth, but when we have our Fourth of July Festival downtown with the fireworks, and it's probably one of our biggest events, I don't, I kind of want to see what that security fee is.
It's a lot.
Yeah, we budget for it.
It's a lot, but like I said, it's a budgeted expense. We know that we're gonna have a Fourth of July festival. We know that we're gonna have several, several hundreds and thousands of people downtown. We know that we're gonna need traffic to, to bring them in. Which is why we know that, again, when it falls on that weekend and they're overtime, we're already paying a premium. Like, we, we budget for that every year because it is one of our bigger festivals.
Maybe we can look at some of this when we going to bargain and maybe we get a little, little holiday.
Holidays are the holidays. They are entitled to receive, um, all the same holidays that the city employees receive. And that's, that's a federal holiday.
I understand.
And certainly, all those events, we've seen it nationwide where events can occur there and public safety being so important, we certainly can't, uh, reduce security on those events, I don't believe. So, any other comments on this? All right, with that, we're gonna move to, uh, council member comments. I will start with Councilman Durio.
Miles, uh, great job with your, uh, strategic plan presentation. Did a good job as usual. And same for you, Shray, with the, with the parade presentation. Really appreciate, that's something we really need to look into. Also, um, I got, uh, some good news. The sidewalk on Fennett Road actually has concrete on it from Sarah Street to the driveway of the library. So, they started there and they're going on the other way, all the way to Fourth Street, correct? So, it started and, um, that's, that's for you, Ms. Addy. Okay, and also, um, can somebody, I know the answer, but for the folks that answered, asked this question, when we buy something online, who gets the sales tax money? Us or the people that's selling, the city where they're selling it from?
Right now, it's upon the sale.
Upon the sale?
Well, upon the sale. That's, that's currently in the legislature again. And it could change, but right now, it's upon the sale.
So, we don't get any, thus it begins.
Unless it's, the seller red tonight too.
So, I also had a, a question. So, on the, on the waiving that fee to the school district, the $60,000, can, can we trade with them and they give us the old price elementary property that they knocked the school down on?
That could be up for discussion the other day.
Yeah, we, we, we can look into that.
Okay, because it's clear, it's clear now.
Councilman, thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Getz?
Glad you're getting your sidewalk out there for, uh, Beaumont United. Just want to keep in mind that Westbrook needs one too. And so, let's, uh, be looking at that in the years to come. And actually, Sally Curtis needs one. Because if you go on North Circuit, you can go so far on North Circuit and there's a sidewalk. But then you get about six blocks away from the school, sidewalk ends. So, we need to finish that sidewalk because those are really little kids that are having to walk in the street. And, uh, it would be great to, I mean, that would be really pretty easy. So, let's, let's look at the Sally Curtis project along North Circuit. Want to talk about brown water for a minute. I see comments from time to time, even heard some today about city Beaumont still got brown water. One of the greatest things that I think we've done is we've become very transparent with regard to how many brown water calls we have. You can actually look at the city water department website and see how many calls you've had for brown water in the last 30 days, the last seven days, or the last 24 hours. And it shows the locations. That's transparency like, you know, you really like to see. So, while I was sitting up here, I looked at that. And in the last 30 days, there have been 17, 17 brown water calls. That is 0.03% of our water customers calling in. 0.03%. That's pretty darn good. And so, I, I want to compliment, uh, Molly and Public Utilities for the steps that you have taken. I want to compliment Mike Hares for the steps you've taken in the water department to diminish brown water, discolored water calls. Those steps include, uh, um, more standardized flushing regimens. Did we ever get the, uh, dioxide generator online at the, at the, uh, water plant?
That project is ongoing. There's been some delivery delays with the equipment, uh, but we are still actively working on that project.
Okay, so, once that's on board, I expect that even the few, very few brown water calls that we get will even go down further. So, you know, Beaumont gets a lot of negative press and it's not always fair. We got a lot of negative press recently about not having enough EMS units on the streets available when some guy got run over that was laying in the road. And I'm appreciative to the city manager and to Tracy Kinnick for putting out a statement that talks about the realities of us following proper protocols on that day. You know, people think that because you don't have an EMS unit available, that, or some people will say that, well, if you'd have had an EMS unit available, uh, that man might not have died. Well, that's, you know, if the man hadn't laid down in the road, he might not have died either. And I'm not trying to say that to be callous, but that is the reality. That's what caused him to die, not the unavailability of an EMS unit. But even if an EMS unit had been there, right there, we would not have done anything any different. We had a senior paramedic, a senior paramedic there within five or six minutes. And he was able to start life-saving measures, which he did. And that is what the protocol calls for. You don't immediately just pick somebody up that's been severely injured in that sort of a crushed trauma and scoop them up and take them to the ambulance and take them to the hospital. That's not how it works. That's not what protocol calls for. What calls, what it calls for is to stabilize the patient so that when he does get to the hospital, they're sent immediately into surgery. They don't go through, through triage. A paramedic is in contact with the hospital, telling them what to expect when he gets there. And you go immediately into surgery. The patient was alive when he got to the hospital is what I'm told. what I'm told. So let's be fair in our criticism and not use it for political purposes, which is what I think was being done in that situation.
Thank you, Councilman Gess. Councilman Turner?
Yeah, Councilman Gess, just, just period. One thing about social media, a lot of people can post whatever they want. Don't cite the sources. Don't cite where it came from. Don't cite the information. And leadership, one of the worst things you can do is give misinformation if you're going to be a leader and want to lead the city. So I think that's important. One thing I want to say about staff, Taylor appreciates you, a solution to parades and small parades. I think it's important that citizens know, we hear them when they approach us about certain things and we can meet and try to form some form of solution. City Attorney appreciates you getting into the weeds to show us what we've done. But I think it's sometimes good to dust off the dust and look at some of our ordinances that have been in existence for so long. I think that's the unique thing about the council. Another thing I do want to say is, I want everybody to understand when it comes to sidewalks, BISD within a one-mile radius, these kids don't get a bus. That means every kid who lives within one mile has to walk to school. So my priority as a council member is, if we're going to focus on sidewalks, when we have a sidewalk budget, I think the budget needs to go towards those schools where those kids are at first. And yes, council members, we all want them in all our wars, but we need to look at maybe some form or way, if possible, even with possible bond, if we can expedite, you know, with our kids. Because truthfully, safety matters and those kids within one mile, they walk. And some of those parents are at work in the morning and they can't control their situations where they have to work to provide for their family. And one thing that came out today in Mr. Haynes' presentation is pipe bursting. I noticed recently, it looks as though as we have almost quadrupled the amount of pipes we have replaced within the last two years than we have within the last eight to 10 years. And that's just a testament of staff working hard. Even though we're not what we need to be, we're making drastic progress and I appreciate that. Calls have went down, even though they're not all the way at zero, they have went down tremendously. That's progress. And we just have to continue to be dedicated to progress that regards to the political pressure. So to staff, everybody working hard right now, I appreciate y'all. And the last thing is Ms. Deborah, the trash in her neighborhood. If somebody from staff could just follow up with me after the meeting to kind of let me know where she's at, where her neighbor and some of the things she's dealing with. As a senior citizen, and I don't want any of our seniors having to deal with neighbors or younger people, you know, mistreating them in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Fellshaw?
No comment.
Councilman Samuel?
I just want to thank the city manager and your staff for addressing the concerns of the residents over on Ada. I understand someone went out to that area. There were about three or four houses that were experiencing some unique problems. So I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Neal?
Just remind everybody to file their extension and pay their estimated taxes before midnight tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Councilman. I just wanted to remind citizens and those who may be visiting in the future that election material and attire is not allowed in council chambers. So if you're wearing a shirt or prayer familiar that promotes a candidate, you should not do that if you plan to speak.
Can I wear one?
And happy Easter.
No. Just a reminder that at the planning commission on Monday, the parks plan is going to be considered. So would love for everyone to come and see what they've done.
Thank you. City Manager?
Certainly want to follow open meeting rules, but after our discussion on the parade, I got a text from someone saying they want to be a sponsor for that parade. So we'll talk about that and release that later. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Durio, you want to come back around?
I just want to remind everyone, you can go to beaumontbonds.com and there's a survey that you can fill out about the upcoming bond. And you know, you can let us, let the bond committee know, give them an idea of some things you might want to see done if we're able to get that bond approved. Once again, it's beaumontbonds.com.
Yes, our next meeting, the 29th, will be an evening meeting. So it will be here in the evening at 5:30. And I certainly want to thank Miles Haynes for the excellent presentation. And you got through it almost without a bottle of water. And our code enforcement, thank y'all for all the work that you do. And that's certainly on a daily basis. And people understand why there's codes when there's problems next door to them or in their neighborhood. That's certainly true. And our building codes team and the work that y'all have been doing and continue to do is really important. And I think we're seeing real progress downtown that's exciting. And I think when we talk about quality of life issues and we're talking about the parade and trying to work ordinances around that meet the needs of people is really important. And without ever sacrificing our public safety with our police chief and fire chief being involved in the process to make sure that everybody's kept safe. And with that, we're going to recess into executive session.